Okay, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We are back for City Administrator's Office. I'm Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joined by my left, Councilwoman Dani McCray, Second District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, Fourteenth District Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Third District Member of the Committee. To my right, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, Tenth District Councilman Zee Cohen, First District Councilman Mark Conway, Fourth District, and Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, Sixth District Member of the Committee. We're also joined by Representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. Ms. Leach, go ahead, take it away. And we're gonna, we're gonna save the ARPA discussion for the last half hour, so I'm gonna ask colleagues to hold any ARPA-related questions. Ms. Leach?
All right. Do we have the presentation visible for everyone? Good afternoon, Chairperson Costello, members of the Ways and Means Committee, members of the Baltimore City Council, and council staff. For the record, I am Faith P. Leach, Chief Administrative Officer for the City of Baltimore. I am honored to appear before you today to provide remarks on the fiscal year 2025 budget on behalf of the Office of the Mayor. I want to start by sending a thank you to every Baltimore City government employee for their hard work and service to our city. And importantly, I want to thank them for their love for our city. It is the honor of my lifetime to lead these public servants as we work to improve resident services and to grow our city. My remarks this afternoon will provide an overview of the FY 2025 budget, as well as the current and upcoming challenges to keeping the city's budget in structural balance. I will provide clear examples of how this, how the CAO supports the transformation and good governance of our city. I will discuss the performance management structures in place to ensure consistent and improved service delivery, and finally, I will provide an update on the city's 10-year financial plan. The fiscal year 2025 budget, recommended budget was built on Baltimore values. From the start of the Scott administration, from the start of the Scott administration, we focused on five strategic priority areas that reflect our core values: building public safety, prioritizing youth, clean and healthy communities, equitable neighborhood development, and responsible stewardship of city resources. This budget is a reflection of the mayor's continued commitment to our core values, our five pillars. The budget totals $4.2 billion, and in this budget, we double down on key investments to prevent violence, address vacant housing, and reform city services while continuing our historic investment in schools and making strategic investments in our employees. Early projections showed $107 million current services gap for FY 2025. Our expenditures were growing 2.8 times faster than our revenues, driven in large part by rising inflation, growing employee costs, and our continued support for the blueprint for Maryland's future. Our projections were updated in January 2024, and two factors worked in our favor to reduce the CSL gap: property tax reassessments generated an additional $9.5 million in revenue, and our required local share contribution for Baltimore City Public Schools was projected to remain flat rather than increase as originally projected. To balance the budget, we made responsible trims to agency budgets while minimizing the impact on service delivery and eliminated vacant positions to slow expenditure growth. Councilmembers, what you have before you is a responsibly balanced budget, but the work ahead is just beginning. In the weeks, months, and years ahead, we need to right-size our government, responsibly plan for the potential economic cliff driven by the end-of-pandemic era of financial relief, and double, triple, and quadruple down on our city's long-term economic growth. We must maintain our fiscal discipline, responsibly grow our revenues, and plan for strategic investments to strengthen our city's workforce, including reimagining our current wage structure to compete for talent in a competitive market. On the slide before you are just a few of the challenges we must address in the upcoming fiscal year. First, preliminary citywide salary study recommendations indicate it will cost $50 million annually to modernize our city's pay structure and fully implement study findings. Next, the ARPA transition. The ARPA obligation deadline is mid-year in fiscal year 2025, while the final spend deadline occurs in fiscal year 2027. Work is ongoing as we plan for these deadlines and work to transition time-bound ARPA-funded programs to the general fund, while sunsetting others. You will hear more about this transition from the Recovery Office during the second half of my hearing slot. And, building in space needs and growing real estate obligations driven by a $3 billion deferred maintenance backlog continue to impact our budget. Low estimates estimate that space needs could cost an additional $3 million in FY 2025. With the mayor's recent release of Downtown Rise, our 10-year vision for downtown, and promising developments like Reservoir Square, we have an opportunity to reimagine the government footprint and leverage our assets to catalyze equitable economic development and drive growth. The FY 2025 budget continues the city's increase in funding for schools. Our local share is up 47.6% since implementing the blueprint for Maryland's future. It increases funding for proactive solutions to reducing crime, including additional funding for GVRS and the continued civilianization of the Police Department. The budget fully funds 20 additional solid waste crews to ensure stability of routine services, including weekly recycling, and this budget realizes $33.3 million in savings by identifying efficiencies in agency budgets and eliminating long-term vacant positions. Included in the proposed budget is the mirality budget, of which the CAO's team is just a fraction. The FY 2025 $17.4 million budget supports 16 offices, including the Mayor's Office of Infrastructure Development, who you heard from earlier today, the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation, and the recently established Office of Older Adult Advocacy, to name a few. The CAO's budget includes personnel costs for each of the deputy mayors, the deputy city administrator, and eight CAO staff members. The Mayor's Office budget mostly maintains current service levels. The overall position count reflects creating seven positions in fiscal 2024 and abolishing four positions as a part of the fiscal 2025 budget. This slide is just a reminder of the city's organizational structure. The mayor provides leadership and direction of the city government, and I provide day-to-day management of government agencies. Now, I want to transition to talk about the work of the CAO team.
Can you, can you go back to the org chart real quick, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Of course. Now, I want to transition to talk about the work of the CAO team. Since I was officially appointed a little over a year ago, my team has worked tirelessly to serve the residents of Baltimore. We are professionalizing agency oversight and relentlessly pursuing improved service delivery. There is significant work ahead of us, but I want to take a moment to acknowledge a few key wins during my tenure. Over the past year, we released a plan to reform our city's antiquated procurement system. We led the city's return to weekly recycling, kicked off the city's 10-year financial planning process, introduced 90-day city service sprints, released agency performance plans for 36 agencies, expanded the Bloomberg Innovation Team to develop a police recruitment and retention strategy, and supported implementation of the mayor's vacant housing strategy. We also led the development of the mayor's downtown action plan, executed the purchase of two hotels, worked with DHR and Charm TV to create the Baltimore's Hiring Campaign, partnered with local HBCUs to create the HBCU Fellowship, developed permit stat to streamline, to streamline the permitting process, established tiger teams to improve lien sheet processing times as well as water billing, and we launched a monthly grants management coordinating committee. And my team is also responsible for coordinating the ongoing agency response to the Key Bridge collapse. While this list doesn't capture every accomplishment, it provides oversight into the work I am leading as the city's Chief Administrative Officer. Next, I want to briefly discuss my team's work to improve agency performance and plan for the long-term fiscal health of our city. In January 2023, under my direction, the Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation worked with 36 agencies to develop performance plans. These plans create clear and consistent metrics for core city services. As CAO, I meet with 36 agencies quarterly to review the status of their performance goals. As a part of our ongoing work to better align performance management and budgeting, these meetings will include a quarterly review of agency budgets. This slide just outlines our performance planning and monitoring process. Next, I want to provide a few examples of how the CAO team is leveraging performance management tools like CityStat and Agile Tiger Teams to improve service delivery, and we'll start with weekly recycling. Nearly a year and a half ago, we tasked a leading industry consultant with conducting an operational review of DPW's routine services. Their analysis indicated that our current trash and recycling routes, when evaluated against industry best practices, were too large. Our trash routes were 20% larger on average than the industry standard of 950 stops per route, and our recycling routes were 101% larger than the industry standard of 1,300 stops per route. As a result of our oversized routes, the report said, and I quote, "Baltimore's service expectations are practically impossible to achieve." The consultant told us to plan for a return to weekly recycling in 2026, but our residents deserve better than waiting years for weekly recycling to resume, so we went to work executing a plan to sustainably return to weekly recycling in March of 2024. We invested ARPA funding to secure new low packers, hired 20 new crews, including 35 drivers and 74 solid waste workers, plus backfilled staff to meet minimum staffing requirements, eventually getting DPW's solid waste vacancy rate to approximately 8%. This slide just provides an overview of that, of that process. This slide is just an example of the metrics that we track through CityStat, through the CityStat process to ensure a sustainable return to weekly recycling. As you can see, we are now consistently meeting availability, availability minimums on fleet and crews. Now, I want to talk about everyone's favorite topic, especially mine, that's 3-1-1. During my hearing last year, Councilmember Cohen said that if I could do one impactful thing in my role as CAO, it would be to fix the closed-means-close issue. Well, I'm here to proudly report, we're not there yet, but I'm working on it. We are employing a number of tools to get to the root cause of 3-1-1 closed-means-close challenges. We've established baseline data by activating resident satisfaction surveys. We developed a dashboard, which you see in front of you, to track survey responses, and we are using the survey data in our CityStat meetings. We are also using the surveys to deploy our OPI inspector to review the work done by Now, this is probably my favorite slide in this deck. With 3-1-1 survey data, we were able to measure resident satisfaction across service areas. And while the data isn't demonstrating the result, the resident satisfaction we want to see, it tells an important story about particular services and drives our focus on system improvements, including improved communication to better set resident expectations, and in some cases, highlights service design issues. I want to take this opportunity to shout out the road and abatement team, as they are the highest-rated city service included in our resident satisfaction survey, with consistently high reviews from our residents. This slide just shows some of the work we are doing based on the survey data, like improving our communication with residents, conducting refresher training for staff, and doing a deep dive on the systems that feed into 3-1-1 to get to the root cause of data mismatches. And this, again, is another slide just demonstrating the survey satisfaction results. I want to spend a few minutes talking about permit, permitting reform, an issue that I know is of high importance to, to all of you council members. My team is working to improve the processes for issuing housing and construction permits in the city through the development of a streamlined, user-friendly permitting process. We're focused on addressing customer satisfaction and call-answer rates. A few months ago, we shifted DHCD permit calls to dedicated 3-1-1 staff. The results were astounding. We increased staff efficiency and freed up staff time to, to focus on processing instead of managing incoming calls. DHCD went from an abysmal 9.8% call-answer rate in December 2023, as noted on this chart, to a 98.6% answer rate in April of 2024. That's what I call progress. We're currently working with the fire marshal to implement call reforms to improve efficiency and provide more time for the marshal's staff to focus on plans review. Additionally, the changes to the fire code currently before the council will allow for third-party plan review, which will also improve processing times. We're also conducting a review of our permit fee structure as a part of a citywide review of fines and fees, and as we prepare for the implementation of Acela, our new permitting system, we are building out a one-stop-shop permitting model that prioritizes the user And this just shows.
You mentioned, rewind for a second, you mentioned Acela?
Yes.
That's a system that we use for right-of-way management, correct?
The new permitting system for DHCD.
For permitting?
Yes.
Are we still using Acela, or that's Invista?
Yes, Invista.
All right, please continue, sorry.
No worries. All right, we're getting close to conclusion. I want to spend a few minutes to talk about the work that we're leading to solidify our city's financial health in order to address the structural budget challenges discussed at the beginning of my presentation. In 2020, in 2013, the city released its first-ever 10-year financial plan. At the time, the city anticipated growing budget deficits and financial challenges due to the lingering effects of, of the recession. The 10-year plan included a bold set of reforms to get the city into structural balance, while also redirecting spending to key priorities such as infrastructure investment and investing in tax competitiveness. Actions from those reforms saved the city about $189 million annually. Under my direction, we began to work, we began work to update our 10-year plan in fall of 2023. The new plan is focused on four cornerstones: structural budget balance, core service delivery, infrastructure development, and property tax reform. The 10-year plan will be our fiscal roadmap for the next decade and will be used to drive our city's growth. Throughout agency budget hearings, you will likely hear me point to work happening through the 10-year plan development process, as the 10-year plan is inextricably linked to key government initiatives. We will leverage this process to review service delivery and staffing models, drive reforms to employee compensation structure, streamline our capital delivery process to expedite our ability to improve our infrastructure, and we will use this opportunity to explore strategies to diversify our revenue sources and implement reforms to our tax credits and ESS, identify strategies to reduce property taxes for our residents. A key part of the 10-year plan, 10-year plan is a tax credit reform working group. The working group convened in March. They meet monthly to debate existing tax credits and potential reforms. The overall goal is to maximize the impact of tax credits while reducing the overall costs. Sessions are scheduled to continue monthly through the end of November. Recommendations will be incorporated into the overall 10-year plan. So we have made some progress on our 10-year plan. In September, we held a retreat with locals and state stakeholders to discuss preliminary recommendations for the plan. Feedback at the retreat has been used to refine proposed initiatives and to refine additional priorities. Each of the four cornerstones has a targeted amount for savings and/or investment. Work groups are being convened to refine and offer initiative recommendations to advance proposals under each cornerstone area. Work groups will offer recommendations to the mayor this fall with the goal of publishing the updated plan by the end of 2024, early 2025. To conclude, I want to thank the members of the City Council for your partnership throughout my first year as CAO. I want to thank Mayor Scott for his vision, his leadership, and his faith in me. I also want to thank our residents for believing that a CAO could make a difference in Baltimore when they pass the CAO Charter Amendment. The next phase of our work together will be a relentless focus on growth, more growth, and yes, even more equitable growth. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Colleagues, there's at least a quorum of the entire council in here. I'm gonna ask that, when we get to you, that you ask your question and ask it as efficiently as possible. I don't think that we need much background for, for Ms. Leach. She's pretty familiar at this point with what our general concerns are. I'm gonna start with committee members down on this side, Vice President Middleton.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Faith, for that presentation, a lot of good, updated information, and most importantly, I want to thank you for really sharing how you have updated this 10-year plan. Just because of so much transition over the last 17 years for me, this is really a very important and powerful piece. And I say that because I think this plan is really gonna help those communities that have been hurting for the last 25, 30, 40 years, and to actually see a step-by-step 10-year plan is really something that helps to keep our, those communities hopeful. So I appreciate that update. I just have a question back to the, I guess, 3-1-1 and the call center, and how we still seem to get information where it says that the, the information is closed. And we have been struggling with that for many, many, many years, and I think I remember putting in a bill trying to get, at least get that language changed instead of having that advertisement, because the constituent just gets totally confused, and we find ourselves repeating, trying to explain that over and over again. So I don't know if there is going to be attention in trying to just get that statement taken off, you know, that the project has been closed, when we know in most cases it's just been moved to another agency or something.
Thank you. I appreciate that question and the opportunity to talk a little bit more about the work that we're doing around 3-1-1. So, a couple things. So by turning on the 3-1-1 survey, which, that was the slide that you saw before you was the 3-1-1 survey results, we've been able to actually do a deep dive on some of the issues that we're seeing in the 3-1-1 system, and they're caused by a couple of factors. One is communication. We are not properly communicating back to residents the status of what's happening with their requests. So, for example, if you have an illegal dumping request, after the investigation, you know, we would, we might close that request, but that's only one part of it, right? The resident is expecting that the dumping be clear, but really, the investigation was just done. That should be transferred instead of being closed out, right? And so some of that could be attributed to challenges with our employees, maybe they need to be retrained on the system, or it could be that there is a data mismatch, because there are two systems that also feed into 3-1-1. So DHCD's system feeds into 3-1-1, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it's DOT. And so we have seen cases where an item is closed out in 3-1-1, but is not closed out in DHCD's system, for example. And so by having this survey data, we've been able to do that deep dive, and whenever council members, you all will send me requests from your residents where things have been closed and they weren't properly closed, what, what I then go back and do is have the, I have the OPI team look at exactly what is happening with those particular requests so that we can determine, is this a service design issue with the way that we're delivering our service? Is it a communications issue, or is it an internal systems reengineering type of issue? So we're kind of in the early phases of just really digging into the data to determine what the root cause of some of these issues are so that we can implement proper fixes.
Thank you. And then my last question, or second question. I know this can probably be directed towards Wreckin' Parks, but you know how we are still having our challenges with forestry and getting things done, and I know that's a big thing that I guess you're trying to figure out how to do the budget with. Can you give us an update of progress with what we're gonna do with forestry?
Absolutely. And so if you notice, on one of the 3-1-1 slides that showed resident satisfaction, I talked about road and abatement being, you know, one of the best services. Well, forestry services, service requests are consistently the worst survey responses from our residents, and it's in part because I don't believe that we are properly communicating back to residents what the timeframe is to actually resolve the issue, because we know we have a significant backlog in forestry, right? And so we might be able to go out and do an inspection, but the resident, again, is expecting that down limb to be cleared or the stump to be removed, and all that we have been able to complete is an inspection, because the forestry backlog is eight months to a year or however long. And so we need to change our communication, and of course, we need to continue to work with BCRP to get additional resources and added capacity through contractors, updated equipment, so that we can really start to dig deeper into that forestry backlog and close that backlog.
So that communication change is through?
Through 3-1-1. So instead, so what we would do is, we're actually changing our communication back to the residents, so that we are very clear about what has been closed or what has been completed, or if it's been transferred, we're notifying the resident that this item has been transferred, this part of it has been completed, because right now, they get very high-level general responses that make it appear as though the request has been fully closed.
And just to add to that piece, the, as far as employment, are there, I know there's a problem with trying to get people to work for that particular, in that particular industry, trees and so on, is, is there going to be an apprenticeship presented, or any update with that?
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question. I believe to establish an apprenticeship, we actually have to go through the state, but I definitely think there's an opportunity for us to really figure out how we can recruit more staff into forestry. I mentioned the Baltimore's Hiring Campaign, so we have been doing a big citywide campaign to increase hiring into some of our hard-to-fill roles. We've partnered with colleges and universities, and so we're gonna continue that work to try to recruit some of those hard-to-fill positions, including those in forestry.
Thank you for that. I think another avenue, too, would be similar to what the Clean and Green Team is doing in Park Heights, and some of those employees might be directed in that interest as well.
Yeah, I think, that's a, that's a great point. I actually, I know we're gonna probably get to housing inspectors at some point, but I actually encourage DHCD to potentially look at Clean Core to transition some of those folks into housing inspector roles, and so I think that's a great idea for forestry as well, for us to consider the, the Clean Core.
Thank you, thank you for that progress. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Dorsey. McCray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Larson, I did find the link. And for our CAO, you did speak about the performance plans. It is something that I've asked about to your predecessor and also to you during this time last year, so I'm happy that there is a, that there are agency plans up. When I look at the plans, they're basically the service, the service descriptors, and also the performance metrics. And when I look at plans from other cities, they have clear objectives, or they have, they have objectives that are also listed, strategic initiatives that are also listed within the agency plans. This plan, the plans that we have on the website just seem to be duplicative of what is just within the budget book. And the reason why I initially asked for performance plans for agencies is that I do want to make sure that there is transparency and accountability, so our residents can see from year to year, each fiscal year, what these agency plans are and what their goals are. What additional items will be added to the performance plans outside of what's already listed, which is exactly what's listed within the budget books?
Thank you for that question. So, a few things. So we actually, this is not exactly what's listed in the budget book. We actually went through a process where we met with all 36 agencies, and we updated their performance metrics. Now, a number of their metrics, including some of their workload metrics and some of, and a couple of their outcome metrics, may have transitioned over, so some of the metrics are similar, but we've also added and refined and tried to strengthen some of the metrics that are included in the agency performance plans. We also have a formal website where, that's also public-facing, so anybody from the public can go and look at the agency performance plans, they can see the outcomes, they can see the quarterly updates that are provided. Now, this is the first iteration of performance plans for our agency, and I receive your feedback about establishing more detailed performance plans, and I'm happy to have an additional conversation with you and any members of the council about some of the things that you all might want to see in those agency performance plans. But as a next step, what I'm hoping to be able to do is, at the end of the year, to provide more narrative and more information about the outcomes that we've achieved, some of the challenges that agencies might have faced as they... some of the challenges that agencies might have faced as they were working to achieve some of their goals. So we do want to expand on the initial work that was done around agency performance plans. The other thing that I mentioned during my presentation was the addition of, of budget information and also using, having the budget team also look at agency budgets quarterly when we do our quarterly performance planning meetings as well. So that work will also be expanded. But I'm happy to have additional conversation with you about what else you would like to see included.
Thank you. I love the meet. I'd like to see a lot more. But I know you're on it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for the robust presentation. I was watching it on my way down here. So I was able to, to hear everything and touch on a lot of topics that, that are priorities for me. One thing I just wanted to touch on that between what you and the Vice President were discussing just before as far as the trees and forestry, I actually came across a gentleman who I recognized from Wreckin Parks originally. He was working for a contractor. And I said, oh, I thought you worked for the city. He said, well, actually, this company came and offered me more money. So I said, well, how'd you get to them? It turns out they actually were recruiting people from city crews that were out doing work. They were literally just approaching them and just taking them from us. And so I don't defer to the law department on, on how that, how that works. But I think that especially vendors who do business with the city need to be told to cut that out and not go and steal our employees and then try to, and then get rewarded by getting contracts. And so I think that they should be aware that that's not the correct way to do business. And so hopefully there's an appropriate way that we can deliver that message to our vendors, not just in that, that agency, but in, across the board. The two things that I wanted to ask about was first, on the permitting slides that you were talking about, you were saying that everything is going to come under one umbrella, which obviously I'm looking forward to because I get permit questions every single day. Will every single function fall under that or is it just the bulk of them?
So what, so with the one-stop shop model that we're talking about, it's not that we are consolidating permitting. We're, we're not quite there yet. But what we're looking to do is through the implementation of our new system, Acela, which all the partners, all the agencies involved in permitting will be in the Acela system, we're going to create a front-facing, you know, no wrong door model, right? And so Montgomery County has it, DC has it, where you go to one website. You don't have to go to the fire department website for, you know, fire marshal issues or DHCD for other issues. You go to one space and you can click through and get answers to your permitting questions and/or apply for a permit. So that's the one-stop model, shop model that we're looking to build through Acela.
So like a common thing that, that comes across a lot is people, you know, they're in e-permits. They filled out their checklist. They think that they're all done. And then they can't get, you know, the final permit. And, you know, I, I see this a lot, especially with pools being built. And what often it is, is that within DPW, there's, you know, depending on how much area they're covering.
Right.
Then there's a separate program that DPW uses for some of the water functions. So they think they're done here, but then that's there. So is that brought back in? So when they're looking at that screen, every line they've completed is green? And then, you know, if they didn't do the storm water piece, that's just red?
So that's what we're looking to do and looking to build. I mentioned the user experience. So we've done some user experience testing and we'll continue to do more testing. BSIT can talk about some of the work that was done there, as well as we have a digital services team within OPI. And they've been very, very focused on the user experience of our current system and what the new system will look like. So the hope is that yes, we would be able to address those issues. So DPW will feed into the backend of Acela, DHCD, the fire marshal. Everyone will be in the backend of Acela. But the experience to the user would be just, it, it should feel the same, right? So whether they're going, whether the permit is over at DPW or is with DHCD, the user experience should remain the same. And they should be getting a consistent update about where the status of that permit is. So we're actively working on it and doing some user testing with the new system.
Okay. And if, if you don't mind, you know, I'd like to partner with you guys on bringing in some of, you know, some folks, especially, you know, the more the, the mom and pop contractors that experience the most difficulty. Large companies obviously have people that focus exclusively on their permitting. But some folks who are like doing a lot of work in the city, I would say it was probably like six or seven years ago when, when DHCD was putting out the current permitting, they did welcome us to invite people who we constantly hear from into test the system. And we found a lot of kinks that were great to be able to resolve before it went live. Like simple things even, they didn't have an opportunity to even put like half a foot. So you had to select from a dropdown how many feet a wall would be. But we know it doesn't necessarily work that way. So they were able to implement that. So that'd be great if we could, if we could open that up to some, some of our constituents. The second thing that I wanted to ask about, you had mentioned in going through and working on a lot of the cost savings metrics, you had just briefly said something about, about property tax reduction. And so I just wanted to see if you can elaborate on that, make sure I heard that correctly and what that looks like.
Thank you for that question, sir. So we convened our tax credit reform working group. This council actually, I think through some legislation and through advocacy from members that are here, really encouraged us to, to convene that working group. And so that work is being led by BBMR. And so we're actually going through and looking at each of the city's tax credits. And we'll be developing recommendations to reform those tax credits. And we'll also be looking at, for example, the homestead tax credit is one of the tax credits that we're looking at. The targeted homeowner's incentive, we're also looking at that as well. And so what we hope to do is have a recommendation around, to present to the mayor around how to reduce property taxes, either through the extension of one of those credits or the establishment of a new one. And so that work and those recommendations will likely be ready. The working group ends in November. We're, we'll include it in our 10-year plan, which should be ready at the end of this calendar year or the start of, of 2025.
So is that, and that's great to hear. Is that something that is going to be across the board? Or is that more targeted, like, you know, you mentioned homesteads for owner occupied or?
So it would be owner occupied.
Okay.
More than likely.
But across the board, owner occupied or specific?
Well, that's up for debate and discussion. And we've talked about a couple of different ways to do it. And then I believe the meeting is open. So if you want to join, I'll make sure that the council has, has the information about all of the meetings. Councilwoman Ramos has joined us. Councilman Bullock has joined us. It's a, I mean, it's a riveting meeting. So we'll make sure that we'll get you that information. But we have been talking about, do we want to target? Do we, we're talking about equitable economic growth. Do we want to do a targeted tax reduction or do we want to do it citywide? There are a couple of options. And so we've been using that forum to debate what that would look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Start down here, Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just proceeding along my colleagues questioning around the permit office. I saw under the DHCD agency report that in, in fact, we will not see the rollout until middle of '25, end of, you know, second half of '25, when we were told only a few months ago that it would be beginning of '25. So can you tell us a little bit about what the delay is going to be and, and why we're seeing that?
For the new system?
Yes.
Yep.
For the rollout.
Mm-hmm. For the, I'm sorry.
The rollout of the new system.
Yes, thank you for that. So thank you for that question. So where we are now, we want to get this right. I'm sure I'm going to get questions about Workday. We want to get it right. And so I want to ensure that we are building in the proper time to test the system, that we are doing the user experience surveys and that we are building a system that is reliable before we roll it out to the general public. I'll ensure that DHCD is prepared to provide a detailed update on the timeline. But we do have a prototype of the system. We've been inside. We've been doing testing. But again, it's important to me that this rollout goes well. And so, you know, we'll build in the time to make sure it gets done the right way.
And are you looking not just at the technology, but I think it, the whole department needs an in, out, upside down, forward, backward, T's eyes, all of that to, to look at? Because it's also, you know, scheduling inspections and then not happening. And, you know, we still get all kinds of complaints about not being able to touch base with anybody, not getting a permit. Like the whole office needs to be reformed.
Yep. So we mentioned Permit Stat. So we actually implemented Permit Stat maybe four or five months ago. And that is what we're doing, is doing a deep dive on the entire system. So we're not just relying on Acela. We're looking at the processes. Because the system is only as good as the data that you put into it. It's only as good as your processes, right? So we know that we need to do work to reform some of those processes, which is how we got to this call center. So that's a clear example of how DHCD wasn't answering the phones. Let's be clear about the data that you saw in front of you. A 9.8% answer rate is abysmal. That should not be the case for any city agency. The way that we were even able to get that information is I asked our BSIT director, our technology director, I want, I want a list of all the phone numbers in the, that are not being picked up, right? And then we went back. We traced whether or not there were employees that, that actually were tied to those phone numbers. And the top phones were DHCD phones. And guess what? They were permitting lines. And so residents were 100% right in that the calls were not being answered in the permit office at DHCD. And so what we did was we worked with BSIT, we worked with DHCD. We identified four, I believe, 311 call takers who are dedicated to the permit office. And what we've been able to see is a 98% call answer rate for the permit office in DHCD in the matter of two or three months since we've implemented those changes. We also use additional technology for, to, to structure how calls are queued. Calls weren't actually being queued properly for, once they went into the permitting office. So we worked on small but pretty meaningful changes to start to improve customer service. But that's just one example of the deep dive that we're doing around permits and that we're continuing to do. I also have gotten a lot of calls about the Fire Marshal's Office. And the Fire Marshal's Office is in Permit Stat with us, alongside of us. And we've also been talking about some reforms that we can do there. The same people that are reviewing the permits are the same people that answer the phones. So when they're on the phones, they're not reviewing permits. And so if we can shift folks off of phones and so that they can solely focus on reviewing permits, then we'll start to expedite and speed up that processing time is what we've been able to learn in the, in the months that we've been doing Permitting Stat. So it's not just the Acela system. It's the whole citywide permitting that we're reviewing.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I would just add a couple of things. One is that, you know, once this is rolled out, to do a huge marketing campaign, because we still see a lot of work being done without permits because people think that the permit office is impossible to work with. So I, we really have to work on that piece of it. And also, you know, want to be a partner with you on, on this as well because it's such a critical piece of the overall strategy around growth, around, you know, rehabbing our vacant properties, around all of that. So, so I appreciate that. Yeah, I just, oh, the other thing is on the website, we should be very clear about what needs a permit. You know, I have a constituent who didn't realize that she needed a permit for a fence. And you need a permit for a fence. I tell people, you need a permit for everything, really. You should just get a permit. And how that works. And also just to have some tutorials, some more information on the website for the average person, not just always contractors, because people need to know, you know, what is it that, you know, really, you know, do you need a permit for the gutter? You need a permit for the paint? You know, all of that would be super helpful, like right on the, on the screen as well.
Thank you for that.
So thank you for that. And the second piece is, the second question is around the, the wage study. And you had mentioned that that's a, a challenge. Obviously, we knew it would be because we need to make sure we're paying people properly and not losing people, as my colleague was talking about. And so you, you kind of said that it was a challenge, but I'm wondering how you're planning on addressing it. We do, I haven't seen it. I don't know if it's been published yet. But, you know, how you're going to fold this into the budget now? Or are we waiting until next fiscal year? What does that look like?
Yep, thank you. I appreciate that question. So I mentioned that this would be a part of our 10-year financial plan. So the preliminary estimates is it will cost us $50 million. This year, we were staring down a $107 million deficit, right? And so we have to be very thoughtful and intentional, which we are trying to do through the 10-year financial planning process, where we are not only increasing the, our expenditures, but we're also looking for revenues and ways to grow and diversify the city's revenues, which is the process that we are doing through the 10-year financial plan. And so it is likely that we will do that work in phases as far as the implementation of some of the recommendations of the salary study. But again, all of that will be folded into the 10-year financial plan so that we can, you know, absorb and afford the additional increase that we know our employees deserve.
Oh, thanks for clarifying that. Do we get it, can we see it? Is it ready to publish?
It's deliberative and it'll be a part of the 10-year financial planning process. But I'm happy to work with DHR to do a briefing for any council members that are interested.
That would be helpful. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Porter.
Can you hear me now? Okay, great. With regard to the tiger teams, one of the major issues that we see is just communication back to the council's office from those tiger teams, those 311 follow-ups. Have you ever considered adding a council representative or just a, yeah, council representative to those tiger teams so that council's offices can get the same information or the same deliberation within your agencies?
So the tiger team is, so it's a cross-functional team that is deployed to solve specific issues, not necessarily just 311. And so it's actually not the teams that are following up on council requests. That work is usually done by me or a member of my team and of course, the agency representative. The tiger teams are the teams that are doing the deep dive work, like the example that I showed you with weekly recycling, where we're meeting, weekly, reviewing data, coming up with recommendations. But I'm happy to figure out how to better the communication back to the council once we've resolved some of the issues that you all have highlighted for us.
Yeah, so I understand the functionality of it. But because we're so closest to the problem, we kind of see what's happening in the community. And it may be something that agency folks may not see, that may, we may offer from a community perspective. For example, when we have illegal dumping down in Curtis Bay, we had significant issues with agency folks kind of seeing where the dumping actually occurred. And so it was kind of in a very walked off location from where the person, you know, where the person kind of said that the location was. We in the council's office would know that because we know, we know kind of the neighborhood. We know the community. But when agency folks go down, they just say, no, it's not there. And then, you know, they, they come back. And so it just allows for a lot more streamlined approach where we may be able to correct some of the human error that residents may, may do when they kind of input 311 for our staff as well. Because they often end up coming back to us, asking us what happened. And so it just, that just creates a much more streamlined approach from the council's office that we may be able to say, no, focus on this area, not this area that they put into the 311 system because that takes weeks from the agencies as well.
Okay. Let's talk more about how we can better incorporate council staff in our, like, agency response team. We've done, we've coordinated, done a number of like citywide coordination or agency-wide coordination. We did one recently on illegal dumping with Councilmember Cohen. We've done some walks in, in your district. And we, of course, partner with your office. But let's talk about 311 specifically.
Yeah.
Because I think there's an opportunity, and I think Steve is here, for us to even provide district-level reports on 311 issues. Or maybe there's a recurring meeting that we have around to check in on the status of some 311 issue. So I'm open to ideas for how we can better improve that communication and partnership.
Sure. And another, kind of another, kind of piggyback off that, when we have the drop the pin in 311, and so that, sometimes that may not work. And so we're able to kind of say, no, that's not where it is. This is where it is. So when you go down, you're actually seeing what people are talking about.
And that, that's, so to your point, that's a very real issue. So in one of our city stat meetings, because we've been increasing the investigations that we do after a resident, after agencies say they have closed and completed a request. And I recall there was this one issue with a vacant lot. And that vacant lot was closed out twice. And it wasn't mowed for two months.
Yes.
And it was troubling, of course, to, to see that. But in part was teams were deployed and they said, oh, we didn't know where, where this was, where it was located. It was very clear where it was located, but that's what was reported back. And then a number of transfer issues. So that's a very real issue about our teams closing out items, saying they can't find the issue. But you're right about the coordination with the council office, because you all may be able to help us fix that. So that's something I'm, I'm happy for us to talk more about.
Sure. The next question I had related to, we're going to stay with 311. The next question I had related to, we're going to stay with 3-1-1. As far as the math that you mentioned about some of the satisfaction results, one of the major issues that we're experiencing with, like, forestry DOT is the connection to state and federal level funding for equipment needed for positive satisfaction on a lot of those SRS. Have you all, how are you all working through those funding gap issues? For example, with abandoned trucks. So, we know that abandoned trucks are a huge issue across the city, and the respective equipment needed to tow them is not here in the city. Or, I believe you all are working on, but I don't want to say it's not here in the city, but you all are working on it. How are you all kind of connecting those larger funding issues in connection to those satisfaction issues for some of those, you know, some of those SRS that are going to be longer-term? Because again, when we talk about forestry, when we talk about DOT, when we talk about sidewalks, all of that is predicated on state and federal funding coming back in order for us to receive those positive satisfaction rates.
Thank you for that question, and it's a really important question. So, a couple of things. So, we have increased funding, and I'll just talk about a couple of different funding sources. We increased funding for the master lease, which is how we pay for fleet in the city. Now, there is an opportunity, and I believe we may have had some discussions in, maybe in a previous council hearing, about potentially shifting fleet costs over to the capital budget. And so, there's an opportunity, well, again, 10-year financial plan, for us to really look at how we reform the capital budgeting process so we can actually maximize our capital budget, which we all know is woefully underfunded. So, there's an opportunity for us to figure out how to address some of the fleet issues through a shift in how we budget for fleet. So, that's on the local side. Also, you all just met with Matt Garbark from the Infrastructure Office. Matt has been absolutely phenomenal in going after federal dollars to bring them back into Baltimore. And so, we've been working with the Infrastructure Office, making sure that we're pursuing those federal dollars to come back to some of our operational agencies. And then also, you know, when we do our state budget as well as our federal requests, you know, we're always looking at, you know, equipment and the needs of our agencies. Just this year, we've been able to actually use ARPA specifically. You heard us talk about the load packers, and I think we ordered 80, if I'm not mistaken. We've received about 20 of them. We've ordered new street sweepers. We don't have enough street sweepers to maintain routine services. And I'm, you know, I'm happy to be very frank and direct about some of our fleet and equipment needs. There is a lot of work that we need to do. We've been able to make a bit of a dent with one-time resources through the Recovery Office, and we're going to continue to double down. But we really do have to reimagine how we budget for fleet in the city. So, that's a really critical and important question. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Administrator Leach. Wanted to just take a moment to thank you for your integrity, for being here in Baltimore with us, for coming at a time that's tough in the city and for having some adversity, but sticking it out. And just appreciate the way you've led and that you always start your thing with thanking the workers in this city. I think that's really important. And just want to thank you also for the problem-solving approach that you've taken in the work, really trying to bring parties together and figure it out. Do have to shout out Nina and Tyler, who work with us on legislation. I just, the approach matters, and you've exuded that. So, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
I want to shout out, we have incredibly hard-working staff on the 5th floor. This relates somewhat to the question Councilmember Ramos asked about the salary study. I know in the past, I've asked, we've asked about our folks who are just truly underpaid. Again, I know you said $50 million. I know there's a lot that needs to be done in order to roll out the salary study. And we have a lot of underpaid folks across the city. But when I look at the people who work for us, who are pouring their heart out every single day, responding to constituents, taking the tough calls, phone calls and emails, and blocking and tackling in such a highly professional way, I just feel an obligation to do better by them. So, specifically the piece about staff salary for council members, could you say a little bit about any progress in that direction?
Yeah, I appreciate the question. And I do want to pause and thank council staff, again, for their hard work. They are really, truly dedicated and passionate folks that work for our city. And I've been able to have the pleasure of working with many of them. So, I definitely understand some of the challenges that the salaries might, that might cause there. So, I'm actually very happy to have ongoing talks with the council about opportunities and ways that we can make some adjustments to council salaries. We can have those conversations as a part of our ongoing budget talks. So, happy to have that conversation offline.
That sounds great. Second piece, I know, you know, there's a whole hearing coming up for DHCD. But in sort of a similar vein around the housing inspectors, I know this conversation you and I have had a little bit. But just when I look at the safety conditions, when I look at the salary compared to comparable jurisdictions, it is really, really, really tough. And as we, you know, Tyler and your team has negotiated the Strengthening Renter Safety Act, it's going to require more of our inspectors. And I think we owe our residents more because we do have some, a small handful of not-good landlords in Baltimore that need more attention from enforcement. Just wanted to ask specifically, again, I know DHCD is going to get its own hearing, but that piece specifically, because I think how we attract and retain, the Vice President talks a lot about apprenticeships. I know we have started to talk about apprenticeships for inspectors. But it just feels like a really tough piece.
Yep, absolutely, thank you for that. So, as I mentioned earlier when talking about the apprenticeship piece, I think we have an opportunity through Clean Core. That program is sunsetting very soon. I believe it may be the end of 2025, if I'm not, January 26? January, oh, January 25. And so, we have some really hard-working and dedicated folks through that program that we want to, you know, create a pipeline into local government positions. And so, I do think that there is an opportunity to recruit specifically from Clean Core into some of the housing inspector roles. The other thing I think that's important around the housing inspectors is, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Kennedy, that I think DHCD actually has to do a better job, and many of our agencies. And I think they would acknowledge that with how they recruit and where they recruit. And so, for DHCD specifically, I don't know that their roles always translate to folks that might be eligible for them, right? So, I am not sure that someone who works for Clean Core could see themselves as a housing inspector. Those folks are usually driven towards solid waste, for example. So, when we were, when I went to the hiring fair that we had, I think we had about 1,400 residents that were at the hiring fair. Everybody was very focused on DPW, solid waste positions, and DOT. And, you know, I had to have conversations with some of the folks there about looking at DHCD. There are opportunities at DHCD. So, there's an opportunity through the Baltimore's Hiring Campaign to really break down some of our positions and really connect with residents to show them a pathway into jobs like housing inspectors. So, I do think that there is an opportunity to do more direct recruitment so that we can fill those critical roles. The other thing that I do want to acknowledge, as you mentioned, is the working conditions, right? It's not a glamorous job. And so, you know, there's work that we need to do there to really get folks interested in some of those housing inspector roles.
No, I appreciate that. And, you know, to use a somewhat overused phrase, I do think we need to reimagine recruitment and retention for a lot of our agencies, but particularly around this issue because, you know, it is critically important work, it's hard work, it's often dangerous work. And we have to figure out a way to meet the gaps. But again, thank you, Mr. Chair, and do want to thank you for, you know, just the integrity with which you've led. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Madam CA, for, I think, all the great work that you do and how responsive you and your team has been. I want to say, one, I'm very excited to see the data that you guys have coming out of City Stat, specifically regarding customer satisfaction tied to exact service requests. I think this is what we want to see. And I think it should inform us much more about what we can do to improve city services and make sure that constituents have positive experiences when they call the city or send in service requests. So, this is really, really good to see, and I'd love to see more. Two questions. The first is for the City Stat team. I'm curious, how much staff do we have dedicated toward City Stat right now?
I think four, for Stat specifically. So, the structure of the Office of Performance and Innovation. So, we now have our Bloomberg-funded I-team. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, there are nine roles. They are now fully staffed, and they have a $3 million, three-year grant. So, all of those positions are for the I-team, which you'll get to meet Terrence, our Chief Innovation Officer, during the OPI hearing. Then we have our Performance Team, and that's the team that leads the performance planning process. Then we have our City Stat Team, which leads the Stat process. We are actually going to do a bit of a restructure in the coming weeks and months where the performance analysts and the City Stat analysts will actually take on similar roles so that we can expand our capacity to take on more stats, to do more research projects. So, that's the current staffing structure in OPI. And they'll have, they'll have an organizational chart. And I think we supplied their org chart as well to the council.
Thank you. And kind of tying on to that question, one of the things when we worked on that City Stat bill last year, it was to Stat nine agencies. I'm curious how many agencies we're statting right now and how close we are to meeting that standard.
Yep, so, right now, let me think through this. And there's a slide that the Performance Team has that lists all of the stats that we have. So, right now, there is, there are quarterly meetings with all 36 agencies around, that have performance plans. As I mentioned, we'll be incorporating budget into those meetings. We have probably, I don't know, maybe like 12 or more. So, right now, we have Clean Stat, which involves DOT, DPW, Wreckin' Parks. We have Permit Stat, DACD, the Fire Department. We have Fire Stat, we have Police Stat. We have Grants, the Grants Management Coordinating Committee. So, we'll make, I'll make sure to get you a full breakdown of all the work that's happening. But it's a small but mighty team, and they've been doing some really incredible work.
I appreciate that. And, yeah, I would appreciate that as a follow-up. And if we haven't begun statting some of the agencies that are on there, I know, I think we slipped Health in there and a couple others. I would love to know what our estimated timeline is for meeting that standard within this coming budget. I just want to make sure that we have sufficient funding to meet that need. And the other question, when we pulled together that City Stat bill, one of the requirements of the bill was to do yearly reports on each of the agencies to better inform the budget process. So, as you know very well, we all know here, the City Council now has this additional ability to move money around within the budget. And one of the key factors that I thought would be helpful in informing that process was having some strong sense of the operational need within agencies. We requested yearly reports. We didn't receive those. I'm curious, like, what the team may need in order to meet that sort of requirement in the future.
Yep, so, I think there are a couple of ways to address that. And we talked about the agency performance plans and the fact that, you know, we want to be able to provide kind of an annual report out. And so, I think there's an opportunity to even combine the work that's happening throughout the year through the City Stat process as a part of, you know, the annual kind of agency performance plan readout or narrative report that we put out. I think, look, I think the team is doing a pretty incredible job. I think this restructuring will allow for added additional capacity. Also, currently in OPI, we have, we also have a digital services team. That team will likely transition over to BSIT because they're doing a lot of, like, the UX and user, the user experience work. But I think the reorganization should allow for the additional needed capacity to make sure that we can get that work done. And then also, I have the chart in front of me with all of us, with all of the stats, and it's like 20 of them right now. We got a water billing working group, Grants Management, Invoice Payment Stat, Procurement Stat, Fleet Monitoring. Matt Garbark leads his Capital Projects Stat, Tax Sale Analysis, DOT Stat. That's going to be a new one, that does not exist. Growth Stat, we did, we actually did Growth Stat one time. And Live Baltimore actually co-led that with DHCD, and it was really about housing. So, I think there's an opportunity to reimagine that one. You Violence Stat, Police Stat. I get a weekly squeegee collaborative report that's led by OPI. So, they're doing a ton of work. So, I can't wait for them to provide an update to the council about all that they're doing.
Yeah, I appreciate, I see the director in the room now, and I look forward to having an opportunity to talk to him a little bit later. Thank you.
I would be remiss if I didn't thank you along with myself and Councilman Cohen and how you really partnered and worked with us for that older adult director and office and just really understanding the need in this city to really kind of hone in and give attention to our older adults. And you and your team and the mayor really partnered and worked with us. And it was kind of like in the middle of the, you know, budget term, and, but you came through. And we all, on the council, really appreciate that. So, on that note, we know that there needs to be more steps taken so the director can have a proper staff to continue those efforts moving. So, I'm hopeful that you find funding that can really help her in our prospective districts, at our senior centers, and so on. It's an initiative that we really have to continue. And I think with the leadership from the Health Department will also help initiate that funding to keep that moving.
Yes.
If you'd like to comment on it.
Yeah, absolutely. So, we actually did start the process to create two additional positions during the fiscal year for the Office of Older Adult Advocacy. I think those positions might still be going through the ECC Committee or the internal process. But that office will have three staff. But I don't think those PDs are posted. But once we have those position descriptions and we're ready to recruit, I'll make sure to ensure that you all are aware so you can help us to recruit additional staff for the office. The other thing, the other added capacity that we've added is we actually have a consultant capacity that's not currently funded through the Office of Older Adults. It's funded through the Mayor's Office, and it's a human services support. So, Brenda Donald, who was the former DSS Secretary and has done really incredible work in the human services space, and she actually was the former Deputy Mayor of Health and Human Services in DC, led their age-friendly framework. And so, she has started meeting with the director around the age-friendly process because it's actually pretty intricate and will take the city a couple of years. So, we've also added some of that additional capacity to help start to build that age-friendly Baltimore framework.
And just to add that there are older adults out there that are looking for supplemental pay for community work. And I just think that's an added thing to help with them. Older adults like to stay active and working within, you know, with their basic constituency is helpful and I think helpful for city government as well.
Absolutely, thank you.
Dorsey. McCray. Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think last budget season, and I think since then, we've also talked about multi-agency coordination. And so, I wanted to focus on that for a second. And we've, you've had the deputy and assistant administrative work with me in my district to do some multi-agency coordination. And I'm curious to know a little bit about how the, how the follow-up is going to work. What are some of the other things that you're looking at in terms of making sure that there's multi- What are some of the other things that you're looking at in terms of making sure that there's multi? Because there's a lot of these issues that are not, as you've just articulated with the stats, that are not just, you know, one agency. But when it comes to problem solving in our districts, putting those agencies together and then getting the follow-up. So if you could talk a little bit about the strategy. Familiar with how things are working in my district. Hopefully, it's working the same way. But also, the follow-up and how we make sure that that accountability is there.
Yes, thank you for that question. So, this has been critically important to me, that we do a better job now that there's a CAO in the city of Baltimore. We really, from our office, we really should be doing kind of that cross-agency collaboration and coordination so that the council doesn't have to. Or they can come to us and we can kind of do that coordination. And so, we've had a couple, some success stories. I've worked with probably about half of the council on some, you know, cross-agency collaborations. Been out on walks with council members in some of the agencies. Alan on my team, ACA Robinson, has been doing a lot of that because a lot of the coordination calls for DPW, DOT, BGD, right? Those types of partners, and so he's been doing a lot of that. I think there's opportunities for us to improve the readouts after we do some of that cross-agency collaboration. And I think there's an opportunity for us to kind of formalize that process. Maybe it's a memo or a write-up or, you know, we've instituted some internal kind of trackers. But again, those things are only as good as we're, you know, providing updates to them. So I think there is absolutely more that we can do to better track and do additional readouts to council. But I think we've done a pretty incredible job of, so far, working together and coordinating agencies to respond to some of those cross-functional issues that council members have.
And I appreciate that. That's kind of where I was going in terms of, you know, can we then share a tracker or something so that we know and we can articulate that to our constituents? That, yep, this is the timing on this and this is the timing on that, so that we're all on the same page.
So we've, so I think Councilwoman Porter, we actually did work with her team on a tracker. And then I think there's been a couple of other responses, but it hasn't been consistent. And so I do think that that's a protocol that we can start to put in place, whether it's a tracker, a memo, just some kind of formal follow-up after we bring groups together.
Yeah, I think that, again, would be helpful just so that everybody's on the same page. And we can also just let our constituents know this is going to happen at this time and be able to do that piece. So I do appreciate that and I hope that we can work together on that. And so, I guess this is going to be part of the growth strategy. But you're talking about the growth strategy relative to, we know, I talk about it all the time through housing. I will admit. But I know that, you know, we're also looking at small business and economic development growth. So is that part of the 10-year plan? Is that part of some other set of folks that you're working with? In terms of how the, you know, really thinking broadly about when we're thinking about growth, we're thinking about everything?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think I'll be able to provide more details probably in the coming weeks to coming months. But we've had some initial meetings with Bloomberg, and they've brought some academic partners to the table that do this work globally and may be interested in doing the work in Baltimore. But we're in the very, very early stages. But this is absolutely a top priority for me. And so, I think the 10-year financial plan will be a driver of growth and it will be, growth will be a focus. But we need an actual growth strategy. And so, we will get one.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Porter? Cohen? Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to go back to the Permit Stat. I thought it was really, really great work, digging deep on an issue and immediately beginning to see results over the last couple of months. Forgive me if I'm wrong about this. Did we create a position to sort of help people navigate permits? Did we do that?
So, have you been talking to Deputy Mayor Williams? No, kidding. Deputy Mayor Williams has been an absolute advocate for a permit ombudsman position. And so, we are looking at bringing in someone that can lead that work. But we do not have a position currently. I think we're looking at potentially repurposing some positions for that.
So it's not in the budget now, but we're looking at it?
No, but I think we were looking, we're doing some work looking at pins and vacancies in the mayor's office to see where we need to make shifts and adjustments. And that is a request that we have, is from the deputy mayor for a permanent ombudsman.
Yeah, I don't know if I talked with the deputy mayor about it. I don't know if I have. But maybe I've been floating that idea out and I just want you to do it, and so now...
Yeah, I think in Baltimore County, I want to say they have two positions. And so, we've been looking at their model as well.
Yeah. I'm dealing with a number of issues with constituents right now where it's just they get gummed up in these permit issues. It could be anything from, you know, they didn't respond to an email or the city never got back, or it could be anything. And these things can hang out there for a long time. So I appreciate any update we have on that for a timeline. The other thing I noted was you guys highlighted the answer rates for phones. And I'm curious if we have that data for other agencies and making sure that we're seeing that sort of response rate.
Yeah, so we have, yes, we have the data for, we have the data by phone line. And of course, we can tie the phone line to specific agencies. And again, as I mentioned, and some of the top phone lines that were not being answered were DACD lines. There's a couple of opportunities here. One, there's potential call savings because we could potentially turn off lines that are not being answered. Also, I think, you know, telework also contributed to some of the challenges. I'm not sure, or I am actually very sure about this, that we have technology, I think it's called the MATEL, if I'm not mistaken, where if you are working remotely, then all of your calls can go to, you know, multiple devices. So my computer can ring, my work cell phone can ring, and my desk phone can all ring, right? And we did not implement that technology for all agencies. And so, if folks are working from home, they may not receive the calls that are coming to their desk while they are working from home. And so, we've been working with the comptroller's office and the telecom unit within the comptroller's office, as well as BSIT, to start to expand MATEL access so that more folks have access to that technology so all their devices can ring at once.
That is, you've already beat me to the punch. And that's exactly what I'm trying to get to, you know. It's one of those things where I think people call, whether they're calling 311, which 311 almost always picks up, you know. Very rarely should you get an answering machine from 311. But when they call a specific agency with an issue and they don't get a voice on the other line, I can tell you've heard from folks, it can be very frustrating. And of course, bureaucracy is bureaucracy and it can be very complicated. So, I'm curious, as a request, can you share that breakdown by agency? Just broadly by agency. I don't want to get down to each line or anything like that.
Yeah, I think BSIT has that information. We should be able to provide that.
And then, if we have like a percentage as well for each agency, how many percent of their lines have MATEL tied to those respective lines? I don't know if that's available as well.
Yeah, I think, and I can get this information from the comptroller's office. I want to say we had 5,000 licenses, if I'm not mistaken. So, but I'll work with the comptroller, because that's managed through the telecom unit within the comptroller's office, but we can work with them to get that information.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Cohen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, thank you, City Minister Leach. Did have a question about just remote work generally. I noticed yesterday, Mayor of Philadelphia announced that all of their employees were going to come back in person. Are we, I know that, I think, remote work has become important in some ways and we learned a lot from the pandemic. And I think it has, in some cases, caused some inefficiencies within our government. So I am curious if we are thinking about fully bringing folks back into the office?
Yeah, so I appreciate that question. So, I work with DHR and BSIT to issue a return-to-work directive. I think it was earlier this year or late last year, with the option for employees to telework up to two days or no more than two days a week. And so, we are continuing to evaluate how that is working and, you know, and potential improvements that we can make to that. So, Philadelphia, I saw that announcement. I think DC also is back to 100% work. But when we look at our peers, I actually surveyed some of the CAOs during our meeting at one of our MAKO meetings. And I believe Baltimore County, they're either at two or three days. And PG County is also at like two or three days. So some of our surrounding jurisdictions that we're competing for employees from are either where we are with telework or have a more expanded telework option than we do. So we do have to be thoughtful about the impact to recruitment because of, you know, moving back to full 100% in-person work. But I do want to be very clear about a couple of things. I think in-person work is absolutely critical. And I think that there is an opportunity to continue to allow flexibility, but not at the cost of creating inefficiencies. And where we see inefficiencies, I have the ability and the authority to work with agency directors to no longer allow telework, to reduce telework options if we're seeing a decrease in efficiency by our agency. So, definitely appreciate that. We do have some data. We've actually been logging, I think this is now available in Workday. There was a point during the pandemic where we actually did not know who was in the office versus who was teleworking. And so now, we actually have the ability, at least through Workday, where employees are documenting when they are teleworking versus when they are in the office. So we have more data that we can use to inform some of our decisions around that. But appreciate the point.
Yeah, I mean, I just know, you know, you mentioned some of the pretty abysmal answering rates for DACD permitting. You know, I think there is some value when folks are in office together. Camaraderie, culture, all the rest. So, you know, it's kind of in a similar vein. I know there's movement to have everybody exclusively use the issued devices. And have we factored in the cost on that? And just curious what that will look like.
Yes, so, we actually provided funding to BSIT to do a laptop refresh and technology upgrades. Because again, that's another thing that was revealed during the pandemic is that not everyone had access to devices. And so BSIT is actively implementing that device refresh or laptop refresh. They've also been going through and outfitting conference rooms across the city to improve the technology because Teams is here to stay. So BSIT has been doing a lot of that work. If I'm not mistaken, was it about $3 million? Shamaya, are you familiar with how much we gave BSIT? Oh, $8 million.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Middleton? Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. ... My next question is regarding, I guess it goes back to Councilwoman Middleton's question about closed means closed. As you're probably aware, very often, when folks put in a 3-on-1 request and it goes to certain agencies like DOT or sometimes DPW, it'll be closed out. Or it'll be, it'll say SR Closed By Agency Specific Management System. It seems like a technological problem and I can be totally honest. This is an issue we've been dealing with for over a decade. I know when I was an analyst, we were dealing with it then. And the hope was that when we switched over to Salesforce, that we could resolve that problem. We still haven't. I'm curious how we, you know, are we doing anything to address that? Have we thought about funding some contractor or otherwise to do a technological solution to fix it so that we don't have to ask about it anymore?
Yes. So, no, I appreciate that. I actually was, you know, again, thinking through all the different tools. At one point, I was thinking, should we just have someone, you know, Black Belt and Lean Six Sigma to just come in and look at 311? We haven't gone down that route. Instead, we've actually been using internal resources. But I'm open to and have had some early discussions about bringing in an external resource around some of the 311 issues. But to that specific issue, so I did speak to that in my presentation. So essentially, Salesforce is still communicating with like two other systems. And there are times where there's a data mismatch, where one system has one, you know, piece of information that an item is closed and then Salesforce has a different information. And so, we've been able to go through, and BSIT has been doing this work. And Director Carter can speak more about the specific solutions that they have been putting in place, looking at and mapping out where we see those agency mismatches. So we've been doing some data bumps so that we can identify those types of issues. Again, 311 can speak more to the specifics of it. They've been doing this for at least the past month or two, so it's still pretty early. But we have seen some consistent data mismatch issues that we need to address through our systems.
Okay. Can you just provide an update perhaps? I'm not sure who on the team is sort of leading the charge here. I'm just curious what we're doing to address it ultimately. I guess you've explained a little bit of it, but my hope is that, you know, next year, we're not still talking about it. And I understand it's a very complicated issue. I mean, like I said, I literally worked on this maybe 10 years ago. So, I know it's not that simple, but, yeah.
Happy to provide, actually, there's a deck I was looking to pull up that we have on 311. But also, when the council meets with BSIT, we'll make sure that the director is prepared to talk about that issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Can you talk a little bit about what the administration is doing to better coordinate utility work, specifically the CAO's office? And utility work in the public right-of-way?
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you for that question. So, we have, much like the agency coordination work that I spoke through earlier, we have folks on my team that are dedicated and working with DOT as well as with BG&E and other partners when they are doing work in the public right-of-way. And so, generally, that would either be the DCAO or ACA Robinson that's doing the direct work with DOT, as well as the utility partners to ensure that, one, they are using the current system to identify when there's work that's happening, that the proper notification is going out. Again, that work is still in progress. And there is more work that we need to do to better communicate whenever work is happening. But my team is working with DOT and other partners to better streamline what that process looks like.
Thank you. So, when someone, when an entity comes forward with a request to do work in the public right-of-way, let's say BG is installing a new gas main, is there documentation of a conversation that's occurring with DPW with respect to water, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure that exists? And what the life cycle for that is? And whether or not they're going to coordinate, totally dig up the street ones?
So, what we can do is, I can provide you with a memo that outlines what that current process is, what the notification process is to both elected officials and to community associations, as well as the coordination that's happening or should be happening with agencies. Yes.
Yeah, I'm just talking about the coordination with other utilities. So, if BG is replacing a gas main, before the city approves them to move forward with that work, is there documentation of a conversation that's occurred with other utility holders in the street to make sure that they're coordinating?
So this would be, so I can't say that there's documentation of a conversation. But what I can tell you is that, I mean, we could go back and pull, because we wouldn't necessarily have meeting minutes. But, I mean, we could pull outlook meetings to show when there's coordination. But generally, what's happening is through the utility system, through DOT's system, they're able to see when work is happening. And that's when their process starts. And that would require outreach to DPW, outreach to BG&E, outreach to... And that would require outreach to D P W, outreach to BG and E, outreach to any other partners that might be doing work in the right-of-way. So I can identify a document to provide you that outlines the work that happens.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that there's any actual coordination that's occurring. So for example, BG says they're putting a gas main on this block. And they, they don't fill out their information properly in the InVista system. So there's, there's no staging or sequencing. And I don't believe that they're talking with D P W or Comcast, Verizon, Vicinity, et cetera, to coordinate, to make sure there's other utilities that can't be upgraded at the same time. I don't believe they're having those conversations.
You don't believe that BG and E is having those conversations or that DOT?
I don't believe that any, any of the utility providers, that when they upload their information in InVista, that's why I'm asking for documentation of those conversations. When they upload their information in InVista?
Yep.
They just do that and then they do their work. I don't believe that they're, they're even having a conversation to start where, and this isn't directed at BG per se.
Right.
I'm just picking one.
Of course.
Comcast, when they're installing a new line, they're not reaching out to D P W to say, hey, how old is your water and sewer infrastructure and do you have, is that in your six-year capital plan?
Yep. So I appreciate that. And what I will say is, it is likely they are not doing that, right? Because they would not be doing that without the urging of the city.
How do we, how do we fix it?
Okay, I follow you. So they would not be doing that without the urging of the city. And therefore, it is incumbent upon DOT through the InVista system to do the notifications and to do the outreach to the partners to help with the, to help with the coordination. So, I mean, again, I'm happy to, if it's a protocol that you want to see around what that looks like, I'm happy to work with DOT to get that response to you.
Yeah, I would be curious, I want you to have to go and recreate something because I'm asking for it. I'm curious as to like, what is actually happening? I see Matt, we've been talking about this for, no, no, no.
Oh, I thought.
Not singling you out. Just are often on the other end of this conversation with me. That's all.
No, I appreciate, so this is what I'll do. So what we will do is, and DOT will also be prepared to talk about this in their hearing, I'll actually have them, well, I think they've already submitted their slides, but I can have them create a slide of the current process so that the council can have a conversation about what currently occurs. And we can use that as an opportunity to identify where there might be gaps and talk about potential improvement. So it won't be, you know, us going out and recreating a memo, but we'll have the agency prepared to talk about the coordination process in this hearing.
Thank you very much. Second question. When BG conducts gas main replacement or electronic transmission cable replacement work, the city has a policy that I believe they have to restore the one-third of the seam of the road?
Yes, within, is it 90 days?
What are, so when, when, as a result of that construction, there is damage done to the road beyond that one-third seam? And my question is, what are we doing to hold the utility provider accountable for the damage that they do to publicly own road?
Yep. So, and the Director Johnson can speak to this, but if I am not mistaken, we are moving to curb-to-curb. But I will verify that with the Director about whether or not the curb-to-curb replacement is required for utility partners and other agencies. I know it is required for D P, for D P W, which this, of course, is a new process for them. But what is supposed to happen, I actually recently had a conversation about this, is the information is supposed to be input into the system whenever the work is completed. I think the clock then starts once the work is completed. We are supposed to send out inspectors and teams that are reviewing whether or not the work has been completed and if, if the road repair was done. And then we are supposed to be doing, DOT is supposed to be doing additional follow-up if the work has not occurred.
Thank you very much and would definitely appreciate if you could be here for that portion of the DOT.
Sure.
Meeting with the right-of-way division. Thank you. Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had one other, two other things. One is, back to the permit office, I thought that the D H C D had hired somebody to help people who have V B Ns, even though their house is fully rehabbed, to try to get the use and occupancy, because that is a horrific process when you get a bill, a citation in the mail for having a vacant building when your house just got rehabbed. And we've sent, at least I've sent multiple constituents to D H C D to resolve this issue. And to hear that maybe they do not actually have anybody on staff that's helping constituents is a little upsetting. Can you go into that a little bit? I thought that they had a navigator that's working on this.
So, so when I was speaking about the permit expediter or the permit ombudsman, that was actually for the mayor's office, to actually have someone stationed in the mayor's office that would oversee permit reform and also expedite the things that come in from city council members and the like. So D H C D, we can confirm that they have that position, but I was speaking more to kind of an executive-level position.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. I appreciate it. And I'll ask that question at D H C D as well. And then you started off your presentation talking about the budget. I just have to say this again, just like I say it every year. I, I don't think that tourism is an accurate measure of neighborhood economic, or neighborhood equitable development, particularly since it's, the way that that measure is collected doesn't really look at whether or not we have tourists in the rest of the city. It just looks at whether or not we have tourists in the convention center, the harbor, and all of our tourist sites. It's been very important to me that we're looking at, you know, getting people to all over the city. And when we're talking about equitable neighborhood development, we really need to really think through, you know, what actually that means for that pillar. I do appreciate that the vacant property piece was moved there two years ago and at my urging, so I appreciate that. I would add that we need to add some more indicators because lowering the V B N level is extremely important, and I agree with that. But we have a lot more properties that are empty, that are about to have a V B N on them, that should have a V B N on them, and in order to take action on those, on those properties. So I would recommend for further budgets, that we look at no mail delivery. That is an indicator that the B N I A uses to indicate, and we will see thousands more vacant properties that are not, they don't qualify for V B N, but they're definitely empty and not used. And the neighbors are taking care of it because they don't want the house to look bad next to them. So just to think about some other ways that we're really looking at the vacant property issue and how we can address it. I would also say that building permit activity above $5,000 indicates significant investments. And I think that would be a great indicator to show, you know, where we're getting neighborhood, equitable neighborhood development, because if we're seeing high permit applications in the amount of 5,000 or over, it would really indicate that there's some, there's some really good activity happening. So I'm happy to work with you on those items. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, any other questions? Cohen?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Colleagues, anyone else? McCray?
C A O Lees, can you tell us about, talk to us about the coordinated effort amongst agencies regarding our current overdose crisis, knowing that in excess of three times, folks are dying in this city a year than our murder rate? How are our agencies coordinating regarding our current overdose crisis?
Thank you for that really important question. So a couple of things, and I really do want to use this opportunity, actually prepared some specific remarks around overdose that I want to be sure to share with the council and also to the public. So to just blatantly and directly address the article that was released today, I don't think that it was a coincidence that we saw an article like that while we have active litigation against opioid retailers and manufacturers. So I want to be very clear about that. We have been going through a very intense deposition process with the manufacturers who we know are responsible for bringing these drugs into our community. And it has had a devastating impact on the city of Baltimore. And so just want to be very direct and clear about that and where we are with that litigation. It is very much active and our law department is going to go and ensure that resources come back to this community and that we repair the harm was done, that was done by these manufacturers prioritizing profit over people's lives. So I want to talk a little bit about some of the work that we have done as a city to really make a dent and really try to save lives, because that's what this really is about. So of course there, we provide free low-barrier mobile medical services. So Dr. DeRaza has been an absolute leader and I want to acknowledge her and all of her work as she is transitioning out of the mayor's office. And she actually partnered with Johns Hopkins University and established a spot van. And so we actually have folks who, Hopkins trains physicians that are out on a van every single day, every single day. They're providing naloxone, they're providing additional treatments to folks that are actually actively using in our communities every single day. In addition to that, we also have an opioid dashboard. So back in 2022, if I'm not mistaken, we actually updated and released the city's opioid dashboard and it's public-facing and there's data available about what's happening there. During the mayor's State of the City address, he also spoke specifically to the opioid cabinet. So you asked specifically about inter-agency coordination around opioid response. And he specifically spoke to the opioid cabinet. And of course, as a part of our expansion of stats, we've been working to establish opioid stat. In addition to that, to prepare for what we hope will be significant funding, now that there's, you know, data that is talking about the impact of the opioid epidemic, we expect to receive significant funding from the manufacturers that caused this harm in our community, so much so, that we need to build an infrastructure to maintain some of the funding that we expect to see. And so we have a framework that we'll ultimately be releasing for opioid coordination office that will handle the settlement dollars that come into the city. And then we'll be activating a community cabinet so that they can inform some of the investments that we are going to make back into the community once the manufacturers pay for the harm that's been done in the city of Baltimore. There's a lot more work that we've been doing around opioids. We have a hub-and-spoke program which coordinates appropriate treatment for individuals with substance use disorder in the city. We expanded access to crucial medication, assistant treatment by training and certifying physicians to obtain buprenorphine, prescribing waivers. We have an overdose, overdose task force. So there's a lot of really incredible work that's been happening in the city. Unfortunately, too many people in the city have lost their lives to overdose and will continue to double down on those efforts.
Within the HAC Committee, you know that we held a legislative oversight regarding the overdose crisis within Baltimore city, and obviously it's going to be more common. When I was saying the agency collaboration, I'm glad you talked about the on-the-spot vehicle. I'm glad you talked about the dashboard that came out of that 2021 hearing, because we said, we want a dashboard. That's what that committee said. We want a dashboard, you guys gave it to us in 2022. I'm going to speak for myself, in knowing that we have to be more aggressive in bringing down these numbers. Often, we are constantly heard, and I don't want to lose any life, but often we're constantly being given information about the murder rate, the murder rate, the murder rate. And we're not talking about the three people who die every day due to overdose here. I want to make sure that it's top of mind, not just to the city council, but to the administration as well, especially during budget season. Can you speak to the agencies that are involved in some of these initiatives that are coming? Obviously, we know about the health department. Obviously, we know about our fire department and some items that they can do through EMS, data that can be used through EMS to maybe drive down this stuff. But what other agencies are involved?
Yep, thank you so much for that question. So I want to be very clear that our work to combat the opioid crisis extends well past the city's health department. And so I talked through, talked about the spot van, they also have a needle exchange program. You also have, in the fire department, their population health program, the Enoch Pratt Free Library has peer navigators as well. So you have D P W staff that are also engaged and responsible for, for needle cleanup or the disposal of sharps. We actually bought on a contractor specifically to manage Sharps disposal at encampments, for example. And so this work doesn't just impact the health department, it impacts every single city agency. We've, we've trained our city agency staff on how to use naloxone so that they can prevent overdose. You have police officers that carry naloxone with them in their vehicles. Same thing with the fire department. You have this also in rec centers. So that's the impact of this crisis in a city like the city of Baltimore, that we have to now train our staff so that they can actually deploy naloxone in case they are a witness to an overdose, which happens too many times in our city. But I want to be very, very clear that this isn't just a health department issue, that this is a citywide issue that we have taken very seriously and we will only continue to double and triple down. And we cannot wait for the additional resources to come into our city from those manufacturers and those retailers that purposely targeted the city of Baltimore after we had made significant headway through the heroin epidemic. And so this was very intentional, the approach that happened here. And so they need to repay and repair the harm that was done to our city. And we'll be able to do even more work when we get those additional resources.
Thank you, C A O Lees. Mrs. Chair, can I, can I get one quick follow-up? This is the first, so this is the first time that I've heard about opioid stat. I'm ecstatic, it's not on my face, but I'm ecstatic to hear about opioid stat. Is there any type of timeline, any type of rough estimate? Or is it, is it happening now?
So opioid stat is not happening now, but opioid stat is one of the planned expansion stats. I'm happy to provide you, so as a part of the city stat bill and the work that we're doing to expand stats, for the health department, we specifically established an opioid, an opioid stat. They have not convened yet. The mayor, I believe he spoke about opioid stat. If he didn't speak about opioid stat, I know that he spoke about the overdose prevention cabinet in his remarks at the State of the City. But this is, opioid stat is going to be a part of the broader work that we're going to do to really look at the data, to drive where we send the spot van and to drive some of the interventions that need to happen in our city. I'm happy to follow up and provide you a written timeline and invite you to the first opioid stat.
Thank you, C A O Lees. I'll be there. I'll be there. I think Dr. Omar said three times, I'll be there. So that's the third one. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I appreciate, I just want to acknowledge and appreciate my colleague for asking the question. Of course, you know, many of us have seen the article today and it was tough. Really, really tough to see that, the trend and the direction for overdoses across the city and, you know, I can't say enough how urgent it is that we, you know, up the ante. And I'm glad to hear that we are suing, you know, the distributors of those drugs. They absolutely, positively need to take full accountability for what they've done and what they continue to do despite what we know today. I think what was really troubling for me about reading the article I think what was really troubling for me about reading the article and learning more about the trend for Baltimore City in particular is we stand out way and above every other city across the country. And I kind of in the back of my mind knew that we probably had, you know, this problem worse than many other cities. But in looking at that trend over time, it's essentially the hockey stick. We just see it getting worse year after year after year after year after year after year. And, you know, this is not an issue we're going to resolve here today. But I'll tell you, really, really hard to see. And I want to make sure that we don't just poo-poo the issues brought up in that article. I think we have to do more, we have to do better, we have to be more creative. And we need to make sure we're pulling in partners from the state and federal level as well for better coordination. I fully suspect that the changes that we'll need to make will be beyond the capacity of Baltimore City government, you know. But that said, I think we need to be asking realistic and straightforward questions. I am also very encouraged to hear that we're considering opioid stat. But as we know, the stat is not going to solve the problem. It'll help us maybe identify where we have those pain points. I would love and invite two, can I come?
Yes. This is what, I'm going to offer this, Steve. Every council member can pick a stat.
Okay.
Pick a stat.
I appreciate that. I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't really have much of a question here. I do just want to acknowledge the gravity of, you know, what we discovered today. And I do think everybody on this council, you know, wants to make sure that we are taking it very seriously and want to work in partnership to make sure that if there are changes that need to be considered in this budget, that we very honestly have those conversations. I want to give you time because we're still digesting that article as it's hit. But I do want to make sure we are thinking about if there are changes that need to be made to this budget before we sign it into law, we think about those pieces. And I just invite that for you, Madam CEO.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to quickly add to what was just mentioned here with my colleagues. I don't know if my colleagues knew this, but I was kind of subpoenaed pretty much and interrogated for three to four hours by those pharmaceutical representatives. And it was just an interesting feeling, really. And just really having to justify and give examples of things that have taken place specifically in my district. I don't know if, and I'm sure it was because of the longevity that I have served on this council and worked with communities. And what an experience it was. And I know that the city is working hard to do its best to help with what is toxic and destroying many people and many families. So I'm hopeful that this administration will work to continue to help the residents and families that are suffering through this disease.
Thank you.
You all wanted to do a ARPA presentation.
Chairman, we ready?
You should start and I'll get it.
Good afternoon, Chairman Costello, members of the Ways and Means Committee and honorable members of the city council. I am Shamaya Kearney and I proudly serve as the chief recovery officer of the mayor's office of recovery programs. Thank you to Mayor Scott and to CEO Leach for their support and dedication to prioritizing people and for thoughtfully implementing ARPA funds for the benefit of Baltimore City residents. Today, I will share with you financial updates on programs and projects funded by the American Rescue Plan Act State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund. But first, as always, I wish to begin by acknowledging and thanking the recovery office team for all of their hard work and for their integrity in serving in their positions. We don't typically get an opportunity to set the record straight. And sometimes it's challenging to remain silent while your work is criticized. But as we always talk about, it is true that as a public servant, you have to have thick skin. And so in that moment, I appreciate every single one of the team members for continuing to work with integrity and again, as always, prioritizing Baltimore City residents. And as I always say, in the end, our work will speak for us. Next slide, please. There are numerous resources that are available that transparently and accurately demonstrate the use of ARPA funds and its impact. The ARPA dashboard provides information on commitments and expenditures by project level as well as some performance measure data. Next slide. There's also the ARPA Impact Indicator story maps, which provides information on city conditions for various topic areas prior to the city's receipt of ARPA funds and also tracks the extent to which conditions change. Next slide. And finally, reports submitted to the council on a monthly basis as well as the annual and quarterly reports to Treasury, which are available on our website. Next slide. I'll now transition into detailed information about ARPA obligations and expenditures. In the interest of time, we will share information on budgets. Over $10 million, however, information on budgets below this threshold are available in the appendix slides and the packets that you have in front of you. In prior presentations and in alignment with prior Treasury guidance, we have shared with the council that we defined obligations as contracts, purchase orders that appear in workday and personnel expenses. So essentially, financial arrangements with and payments to third parties for goods and services. On March 29, 2024, the U.S. Treasury Department released guidance with an updated definition of obligations, which now includes interagency agreements and other relevant administrative costs. As such, we're sharing what I'll call updated terminology. And so for today's presentation, when I reference commitment, we're speaking about the total funding investment across all fiscal years. Obligation, which will now include interagency agreements, personnel costs, and administrative cost estimates through the expenditure deadline. Under contract, which means contracts, purchase orders, and standalone invoices approved in workday and personal expenses to date. Expenditure means the amount charged to ARPA across accounts, across ARPA accounts. Next slide. Per the new definition, 94% of ARPA funds have been obligated through April 2024. In comparison with other cities with populations greater than 250,000, about 54% of cities have obligated 70% or more of their ARPA funds. Since this analysis is based on January 2024 data published by the U.S. Department of Treasury, this data would not take into account the updated definition of obligation, which I just shared with you. However, this data does demonstrate that we are generally on par with obligating ARPA funds when comparing ourselves to other cities with similar-sized populations. We've also expended 40% of our funds to date for a total of $255.7 million. Next slide. In my last few hearings, what I've shared with the council and have noted on multiple occasions that the recovery office would conduct comprehensive analyses of projects and programs funded by ARPA to identify if reallocation opportunities were available. I'll now share with you the result of our first set of analysis. Next slide, please. There are five grant awards that will be reduced by a total of $66.5 million. You may recall that there was $80 million that we set aside for budget stabilization. Last year, there were concerns that unobligated funds would be taken back by the Congress. And so we made the decision to allocate those funds for programs and services. There was about $1.4 million remaining once we finalized program budgets from some of the previously announced commitments. That makes a total of $67.9 million available for reallocation to new or expanded investments. In the following slides, I will share with you and walk you through modifications to previous commitments and the 11 projects for which these reallocated funds will be used for. The recovery office and our commitment to not leave a dollar on the table will continue to look for reallocation opportunities to ensure that all funds are fully obligated by the end of the calendar year and to minimize the risk of returning any grant funds that were awarded to the city. Next slide. The following five grant awards will be reduced. There was an original commitment to DOT for $27.1 million. $14 billion of that commitment was for a resurfacing portion of the award. There are highway user revenue funds that we learned after the announcement of that commitment that were available and that could be used for road resurfacing. As such, we are reducing the DOT commitment and modifying it to $13.1 million. The BCHD original commitment was $80 million. We are reducing the BCHD commitment by $35 million. You may recall that we took a FEMA-first approach. There were many activities like vaccination testing, contact tracing, things of that nature that could be reimbursed by FEMA. And when we were, where we were in the pandemic, we were uncertain at that time when FEMA reimbursement would end. We've right-sized the budgets and reduced some of the activities and staffing, which result in a modified commitment of $45 million. B-SIT's original commitment was $35 million. We are reducing that commitment by $5 million, in part because of challenges related to supply chain, labor availability, and procurement delays. However, since transitioning the office, the BDE and B-SIT have really taken off. And we are excited that nearly 100% of their $30 million allocation is committed. And we'll talk about that more in some of the subsequent slides. The MONZI original commitment was $50 million. We are reducing that commitment by $9.5 million. There was an overprojection and a delayed start for the behind-the-wall program. And so as such, we are modifying that commitment to $40.5 million. General fund restoration and AFO positions. You may recall that we discussed that during the pandemic, there were several positions that were frozen. There were conversations with BBMR and other agencies to restore some positions that would then be funded by ARPA. In addition, at the time, there was the desire to create agency fiscal officer positions, nine positions that would train under BBMR and then eventually be deployed to city agencies. For various reasons, that initiative did not take off. And so as such, there's a $3 million reduction that we will make to that commitment. Next slide. I'll now talk through new and expanded commitments with these reallocated funds. For public space and parks, $20.8 million will be used to fund inflationary budget gaps for the Gardenville Recreation Center, renovate the Greater Model Pool, fund construction of the recreation center in South Baltimore, and also renovate Cecil Community Park. For school design renovations and scholarships for recent graduates, that's a two, I'm sorry, $10.2 million. Funding commitment for design services for City Springs Elementary and Middle and Edmondson High Schools, in addition to installation of an air conditioning system at Northwestern High School and the renovation of synthetic turf, of the synthetic turf football field at Mervill High School. I will also be providing last-dollar needs-based scholarships to Baltimore City Public High School graduates. There is also a $10 million commitment for fire safety equipment and fire station improvements. This is for renovations at fire stations, roof repairs and replacements, and also total replacement of mission-critical equipment. There's also $6 million that will be provided to support one-time incentives for positions within city government. There's also the extension of the recovery office through FY 2027. You may recall that when the recovery office was originally established, this office was to sunset at the end of calendar year '24 to align with the obligation deadline. However, the Treasury Department requires, per the law, that the final report that is due for how ARPA funds are spent is due in April of 2027. And the subrecipient monitoring and the reporting to the United States Treasury is something that we have centralized within the recovery office and would be challenging to have all of our individual agencies continue to do that level of subrecipient monitoring and reporting. Therefore, the extension to the recovery office. So the recovery office will sunset in June of 2027. That's roughly two months after the final report is due to the U.S. Treasury Department to allow for final ticks and ties around financials, making sure that documentation is centralized, things of that nature. There's also the HBCU Fellowship, which is a $4 million investment to recruit talent from local HBCUs to develop a pipeline into city government careers and to assist with feeling hard-to-hire positions. In addition, there's a $3 million commitment to the tax system modernization, which is a much larger costing project. However, there's a commitment from ARPA for the three-year subscription for the software solution that assists with revenue and property tax components to support that overall effort. There's also program evaluation at $500,000 to expand our existing university partnership with the University of Baltimore, who will conduct 10 evaluations of ARPA-funded programs and continue to provide other technical assistance. We've talked before about the use of the University of Baltimore to help us make data-informed decisions around some of the initiatives that we funded through ARPA and if there are opportunities, we might want to consider to fund some of those initiatives through the general fund in future years. For economic development and opportunity, there is a $4 million investment into downtown revitalization initiatives. You have heard conversations about the Downtown Rise Plan, and, which is an initiative that will be led by the Downtown Partnership of Baltimore, which includes elements such as restaurant recruitment into vacant spaces, small business assistance, graffiti removal, and other cleanup-related initiatives. Next slide. I'll now walk us through budget expenditures for agencies with budgets over $10 million. Next slide. So DOT, there has been zero funds expended to date. However, we did not execute a grant agreement with the Department of Transportation until April 2024. Therefore, that's the reason why there is no spend. But there is funding available, again, for sidewalk repair and ADA rent reconstruction. And so we are closely working with the agency on that implementation. Next slide. The Department of General Services, there's 13% spend. In general, we provided funds to DGS to fund and execute products on behalf of other agencies, such as the Pratt Library System, the Fire Department, and DPW. We signed the grant agreement with the Fire Department for their capital projects and that was executed in March of 2024. Therefore, there are no funds that have been spent in those various line items. We're also closely working with DGS and Pratt Library on the implementation of funds that are made available for some of their HVAC repairs. And also, you've heard CEO Leach mention the purchase of load packers. ARPA has funded, has funded 20 load packers and there are some that have been received to date and others that are in the pipeline to be delivered. Next slide. For the Baltimore City Fire Department, we've talked about that a little bit already, that we just executed that agreement, so there's 0% spend. But did want to share the detailed budget for how much funding is available for the various repairs and replacement and renovations, as well as for critical equipment. We also included these amounts in the DGS slide just because we've generally talked publicly about the investment being for the Fire Department. So just want to make sure that you all could clearly see that $10 million investment, even though there are parts or components of this agreement that will be executed by DGS. Next slide. For DPW, there's 32% of their overall budget that has been expended. There are fleet purchases underway that include public way cleaning equipment, such as mini load packers and Bobcats. Thus far, many load packers were ordered in April 2024, but the expenditures are not yet showing. There are also contracts that are being amended for capital and operating improvements resulting in no expenditures to date in that particular line item. Next slide. For the Department of Housing and Community Development, specifically for initiatives related to elimination and blight elimination and prevention, there's the SEPTED program or Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. That includes funding for... That includes funding for demolition and stabilization of properties. DHCD anticipates one billion dollars will be spent on these activities by the end of the summer, so we do expect to see expenditures there in the coming months. For wealth building, the nonprofit partner will administer up to eighty grants to homeowners for contractual costs for health and safety facade repairs, and DHCD is targeting late June for BOE approval of the agreement with the community partner. Next slide. DHCD Resident Protection and Anti-Displacement Efforts. For Baltimore Shines and Right to Counsel, there are zero expenditures to date. For Baltimore Shines, there's a job training and solar installation component. The community partner, which is Civic Works, will begin programming this summer, and DHCD will begin disbursement of funds to Civic Works for solar installations in the coming months. For Right to Counsel, this is a reimbursement for staff positions for those that are assisting with eviction prevention initiatives, so we do expect to see expenditures to hit our books soon as well. Next slide. For DHCD Capital Investment, the overall spend there is forty-six percent. For Tavoli, there is currently zero expenditures. However, we did have some challenges with some historical designations that have since been mitigated, and so that project is moving forward. For our Uplands redevelopment, we're excited to announce about ninety that it's ninety percent complete and expect it to be fully complete by the summer of twenty twenty four. For Park Heights Infrastructure and Senior Housing, it's about twenty percent complete, but appears to be on target for for completion date by twenty twenty five. Next slide. For Department of Planning, for it's seventeen percent expended to date, specific to blight elimination and prevention. There are no expenditures to date for the Inspired Developer Incentives Program, but DOP does anticipate completing its subgrant to its community partner in June of twenty twenty four, and that redevelopment projects will begin shortly thereafter. Next slide. For the Clean Core Program, expenditures reflect funding that's been provided to the Baltimore Civic Fund, who is the administrator or fiscal agent for that program, to pay salaries related to crews. The program is is going well, and if you haven't already seen the videos on our social media pages, which highlight some of our council members who are interested in participating, please do see our videos and also our Instagram page, which captures much of the progress that's being made by the Clean Core workers and activities and its progress. And I'd be remiss not to also acknowledge the Department of Planning, who is working very hard to implement that program. Next slide. The Food and Security Program is forty-nine percent expended. There are four components to this program. One is the Farm Incubator, the second is the Farmers Market, three is the Online SNAP Program, then also the Produce Box Program. DOP is positioned to fully expend funds before the statutory expenditure deadline. Next slide. The Baltimore City Health Department, with the adjusted or mod or mod modified budget, they are at fifty-six percent spend. The Recovery Office has worked with the department to right-size the budget after FEMA reimbursement ended in May of twenty twenty three. Activities such as contract tracing, testing, and vaccinations are ramping down to better align with necessity and demand. Next slide. The Baltimore City Office of Information and Technology is at thirty-three percent spend. The org the agency is currently working on the second round of the Digital Equity Fund and ramping up efforts to make more awards available to external organizations. For broadband phase one and two, that includes extending Wi-Fi to public housing and recreation centers. That work is ongoing, and nearly one hundred percent of those funds are under contract. For the tax software system, expenditures reflect funds that were due at contract execution, and the modernization contract is ongoing. Just as a reminder, that the ARPA component is for subscriptions only, and there is a larger expenditure or larger amount that is attributed to that particular project. For hardware refresh, there's we we will replace about thirteen hundred PCs and upgrade ten to fifteen meeting rooms with hybrid technology and also replace one hundred and fifty to two hundred network switches. This investment also includes replacing one hundred and eighty-five city watch cameras and updates the infrastructure supporting a minimum of forty-five cameras. Next slide. Recreation in Parks is at a six six percent expended. There's six out of our twenty playgrounds are complete, and BCRP expects to complete the remaining playgrounds by fall twenty twenty four. The Tamonda and Coldstream Pool Projects were awarded in April twenty twenty four, so we anticipate to see spend against our books soon for those projects. BCRP is also targeting a June BOE date to award the Greater Model Pool Project. And also, you'll note that the reserve account is zeroed out. That original line was for contingency for inflationary costs, and those costs have already been absorbed by inflationary costs related to some of our capital projects for pools and recreation centers when bids came in higher than what we expected. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, they are at forty-eight percent expended for their budget. The train-up and hire programs are seeing great participation and completion numbers. For Youth Works, we saw lower-than-expected participation last summer, which contributed to lower spend in this particular line item. However, we're excited to learn that there are over ten thousand signups for Youth Works this year, so we anticipate significantly higher spend, but of course, we'll continue to monitor. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, they are at thirty-two percent spend. For Gun Violence Prevention, we expect for spending to increase as GPRS expands citywide. Underspend to date has primarily been due to delayed implementation and staff turnover with some of our community partners. For subsidized employment, initial projections for the programs, and that's specific to the returning citizens behind the wall program, that the initial projections, again, were were higher than the take-up rate or the the number of people who want to participate in the program. But the office is continuing to recruit for the program and also examining the opportunities to to recruit at additional correctional facilities to increase the number of participants. For Youth and Trauma, this primarily consists of grants to community-based organizations and implementations from some recommendations from our Child Fatality Review Board. And some recipients have experienced challenges with invoicing for services, which contributes to the appearance of low expenditures. We are in partnership with MONZI, are continuing to work with our subrecipients to ensure timely invoicing and timely payment. Next slide. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services is has thirty-eight percent of their budget expended. Award selections have been made for the Housing Accelerator Fund, and that will be ten grants that are provided to developers with the idea to to execute in the summer of twenty twenty four. For our shelter acquisition planning line item, we are continuing to work with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services to right-size the budget and understand the true cost of shelter. We do anticipate that there will be additional shelter costs in the coming months and are committed to working with the organization to make sure that we get all of those all of those budgets right-sized and that we're able to cover shelter costs. Next slide. For the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs, as noted earlier, the overall budget for the office will now increase to seventeen million dollars. The line items primarily consist of consulting services, office space, and personnel cost. Next slide. Next slide. Also want to share the list of fully expended grants to date, which totals thirty point six million dollars. You'll see that those fully expended grants include the vaccine incentives to city employees, the Baltimore Civic Fund, and it's that which was a part of the Economic Recovery Fund, as well as Visit Baltimore, the Family League of Baltimore City, and the first round of Artist Relief Grants for the Baltimore Office of Promotion in the Arts. Also fully expended is the funding that was provided to BOPA for Artscape, the redevelopment of Lexington Market, the Omega Baltimore Foundation, and then lastly, Bethel Outreach. Next slide. In conclusion, in addition to viewing our website, please do follow us on Instagram, YouTube, X, and LinkedIn to see real-time information, photos, and videos to help keep you informed. That concludes my presentation and happy to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Schaefer.
All right, thank you very much for the presentation. Can you just elaborate a little more on the Baltimore Shines? I know a lot of people in solar, so I was just curious like what that how that model looks like and are they, you know, are they given jobs after? Is it in partnership with any companies or is it just the industry?
So that is a program that hasn't fully gotten off the ground yet, but there is a training component where we are providing services, our job training to help get Baltimore City residents involved in installation of our solar panels. There's also a two-point-eight million dollar component of that project, which will install solar units on the roofs of homes. And so we'll do that work through Civic Works and in partnership with DHCD, and we expect for that to to kick off sometime this summer, hopefully.
Oh, so the city's managing the solar, the solar projects?
No, we're partnering with with Civic Works to do the work, but we've awarded the funding to DHCD, who will then subgrant to Civic Works, who will actually do the implementation.
Gotcha. So who so who does the like equipment belong to?
Who does the are you talking about?
Solar, if if we're doing it on homes, I assume it's a citywide program to anybody who wants solar on their house and reduce their electricity bill?
That's correct.
So who's like who's that who's that solar equipment and stuff belong to? Is that Civic Works or is it being done with like a company that does this?
I don't know the answer to that question, so I would ask DHCD, but we'll make sure that we provide them with an opportunity to give you an update on the equipment piece. That's just something that I'm not certain of, quite honestly, sir.
Gotcha.
Director, obviously, majority of the questions that I had, you did answer before the hearing, and I appreciate that. I do have one additional question. This is going to be a committee request. I don't know if you'll be able to to answer this off the the top. Can you give me get me a breakdown by agency of any funds, any ARPA funds that were awarded for anything related to the overdose crisis in in a breakdown by agency? So the total amount of any ARPA funding related to the overdose crisis and a breakdown on the awards by agency, if any? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman, we can, in addition to the ARPA, as a part of the litigation, we actually pull the entire city budget, so we can also send you the city budget as well that's been dedicated to the overdose prevention crisis.
That actually works. I feel like I got information from a previous staffer who was with BBMR, but I didn't get the second part of it, which was an agency breakdown. So if you guys can also provide not just the ARPA funding, but the entire within the entire budget and just a breakdown by agency, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I got two clarifying questions. In the presentation, there was a breakdown for spending with Clean Core that we'd expended seventy-five percent of the fourteen million dollars to date, nearly eleven eleven million dollars, and that it went toward cleaning services completing alleyways of forty-five hundred of those instances. I'm curious, because that seems pretty expensive to me for the sort of delivery, like what we actually get out of it. I'm curious, does it go toward more than that? What? How do we make sure that that eleven million dollars is spent towards something that, you know, has a significant impact?
So what's included what's included in the presentation is the amount of funding that has been dispersed to Baltimore Civic Fund, who is administering the program. So that is not the same as actually the amount that's on the ground. Now, if you would like us to get a breakdown of actually what has been spent of the ten billion that's been dispersed, we can certainly do that for you.
Yeah, I think I'm not sure if that answers my question. It just, simply put, it seems pretty expensive. I did some rough math here, and I don't know if this is a fair way to assess this, so please correct me if I'm wrong here. I just divided eleven million dollars, I averaged it out, by forty-five hundred cleaning services requested for alleyways. Is that is that fair to do? I'm looking at slide twenty-three.
Yep. So there are other activities that are not included on the on the slide.
Okay.
So while the director finds that information, they do much more than just alley repair. They actually maintain vacant lots. They actually are now a part of our current city services branch, and they're they're supporting like litter removal, so there's a lot more work. They there's actually a dashboard where the Department of Planning actually collects data on the tonnage of trash that's been collected by Clean Core crews. So they actually have very robust data that I will ask the Department of Planning to be prepared to share with you about all of the work that the Clean Core folks have have been doing since they've been working.
Okay.
And then they recently, I'm sorry, so I believe we initially started out with sixteen neighborhoods, and we did a recent expansion so that we could touch even more communities with with our Clean Core services, and we're partnering with community-based organizations and folks in the neighborhood as a part of that process. I'll make sure that you get a robust update on that.
Yeah, that'd be helpful, like a map of where they've been working and a more complete picture of the kind of services they provided to date would be really helpful. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're getting our money's worth there. My my second question has to do with B-SIT and funding that went to B-SIT. And you note here on slide twenty-six that funding went towards replacing one hundred and eighty-five city watch cameras and updated infrastructure supporting forty-five cameras. Is that still happening? And is there an opportunity to consider expanding city watch to parts of the city that don't currently have city watch cameras?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So yes, that work is still happening. I'll make sure Director Carter is prepared to provide an update on the status of that work. As far as as expansion goes, the director can talk a little bit more about this. It depends. It depends on the infrastructure in those areas and if the infrastructure would allow for installation of city watch cameras. Also, my understanding is our network was at capacity. So last year, I think I worked with the council and we added some additional city watch cameras as a part of last year's budget. But according to B-SIT and their and their folks, we really need those network upgrades before we can add more cameras onto the system. That's why this work that we're doing with ARPA dollars is going to be critical to allow us to potentially expand and add more cameras, but I'll be sure the director's prepared to talk about that.
That's helpful. And when you say-
And if I could just add that that the work has been completed on those cameras already, so those are fully deployed and that work is already completed.
Okay, great. And as as far as network upgrades, does that mean like additional fiber or more robust fiber to handle more activity? What what kind of?
So again, I'll make sure that the director is prepared to talk about specifics. I believe that it is about more robust fiber, but again, I'll make sure Director Carter is prepared to talk about that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you, Madam Director. Curious what we are doing or have done to sort of communicate with organizations that may have received some of the ARPA funds, just about the sort of ARPA cliff, if you will, knowing that these funds are going to be expiring soon and that, you know, obviously it won't be there anymore. And, you know, knowing that one of the choices this administration made was to distribute funds to a lot of community-based organizations, some of which have, you know, high levels of sustainability and fiscal management, others maybe less so. So just curious what the level of communication is with community-based organizations that receive funds about sort of next steps, any further assistance from the city, but also that, you know, these funds are ending.
Thank you for the question. I would just say that first, I think we really should look at ARPA as a shot in the arm, not a slow IV drip, if you will. And so there was always the intent that we would provide this funding to organizations, but the sustainability, we were never going to be able to do that. Not with six hundred and forty-one million dollars, we weren't going to be able to generate additional revenues to equal that amount. And so we've certainly had conversations when we onboarded, that's the terminology terminology that we use in my office, organizations, we shared with them what they should be doing to think about sustainability beyond ARPA. No, not even our city agencies are going to be able to provide programs and services at the same levels that ARPA allowed. at the same levels that ARPA allowed, but looking thoughtfully about how they are deploying their resources, if they're seeing improvements in some of the programs at work, making sure that they're looking into how they can continue to do that with their current revenues. Quite honestly, there are probably some organizations who, we might have saved some organizations from closing their doors, but that might not be the case after ARPA. And so we've had conversations, and we've tried to partner with organizations like MPN and others and some of our other nonprofit organizations who are, using your term, you know, kind of more sustainable and better capitalized, to kind of work with our smaller organizations to help them learn best practices and things of that nature. That's also a part of the monitoring process that we've employed by sharing with organizations what are best practices, so that they can be competitive for federal grants in the future. We have our Funding Opportunities page that is on our website, which is also something that's publicly available to anyone who comes to our website to identify other grants and other funding opportunities that organizations can seek beyond ARPA. But we certainly had conversations from the very beginning that organizations may not be able to offer programs and services at the same levels that ARPA allowed for them to do, but that they should be thinking about how to off-ramp, if you will. And so as we're doing our grant closeout with organizations, that is a part of our conversation with them, is about their sustainability initiatives and efforts beyond ARPA.
No, and I appreciate that. And look, I think we have a challenge in this city around fiscal sponsorship, around sort of the small-to-mid-level nonprofit organizations that, you know, we have a lot of nonprofits in this town.
Yes.
Many of which are doing extraordinary work and don't receive enough funds, but there's an enormous amount of them. And I know there've been conversations in the foundation world around once strong city sort of stopped being able to fiscally sponsor and had its whole collapse, kind of what would come next. And I know MPN, to some degree, stepped into that gap, but it just, you know, it's come up in some of the conversations I've had with ARPA-sponsored organizations, is like, what comes next? And how do we, as a city, as a sector, continue to support folks and just make sure as many organizations stay whole? And again, you know, your point is taken that we knew this money was going to end. I mean, the shot in the arm versus slow drip, you know, it's a finite amount of dollars and infinite amount of needs. But I would just encourage us generally to think long-term about how do we sustain, you know, how do we support a more healthy fiscal ecosystem for small and medium-sized organizations that frankly struggle with fiscal sponsorship and managing money and all the rest? And just that that be part of, like you said, that be part of the closeout conversation with ARPA for a lot of these organizations in town.
Yep. I absolutely agree. Point taken. And, you know, just so that you know, these are conversations that I also have with my counterparts in other cities. And we're all thinking the same thing and trying to figure out how we can best situate and help our nonprofit sector, so we're not alone in that struggle, but I hear the point.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Colleagues, just going to ask that we be brief, because we're six minutes past due to get started with DGS Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am fully aware of what's going on with the Tavoli Ego Village, and I'm really pushing hard and working with DHCD to make sure that this money gets spent. I had a question about the permit system upgrades line item. The, it sounded to me, Madam CEO, that things are moving forward on this, but there's no spend here. This says $3 million, and only 130 of it has been spent.
Thank you for the question. So I think there's, I want to make sure that we're clear about a couple of things. So obviously, we're talking about the expenditure, but then there's also the obligation. So DHCD, I believe, is that line 100% obligated? So that's the, we are in contract with the vendor to provide the system, and the vendor has only drawn down on, or we've only paid out the 136 or the amount that you see in front of you. So it's moving forward because we have a contract to do the work.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because we don't have that other column that says what's obligated, so.
Let me also just share, too, that the additional dispersals are based on achieving certain milestones per the contract. So you're not going to see expenditures against the obligation until those milestones are met. So there's a plan and the milestones that are a part of the contract, and that's when you'll start to see that, when those milestones are hit.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I'm concerned about this low percentage here of the spend. I'm really concerned about it. And I want to just make sure, particularly hubs is such a, well, all of these programs are extremely important for the goals that we have set, both for reducing vacant properties and also for preventing new ones. So I'm trying to, and I will ask this on whenever the thing is next week, to DHCD, what the, this is a super-low spend, so I'm hoping that we're figuring out what the issues are here.
Yes. So we've actually been meeting pretty regularly with DHCD around their spending, especially on some of these core programs. So specifically for hubs, one of the things that we've been working with DHCD on is they're actually going to be moving some agreements to the BOE, where they're going to be distributing funds to, like, the hub community partners. So I guess it's a group of organizations that are responsible for hubs implementation. And so instead of DHCD doing all of that work in-house, they're actually going to move that money to those partners to get it on the ground faster. DHCD will provide in-house support and capacity building to the partners, but like, that was a strategy shift that we implemented, so that those services can get out to the community faster. And a couple of other, and we'll make, I'll make sure that DHCD actually provides a very detailed overview of where they are with their spending and some of their projects. A couple of their projects, especially on vacant housing acquisition, for example, they're going through the legal process, right? So you're not likely to see the spend, but they actually have a breakdown by month on when they anticipate, you know, some of those, some of those items to be moved. So happy to make sure that DHCD provides a detailed overview during their hearing.
Thank you. I think the hubs issue, just by my understanding of how hubs works, I think some of the agencies actually need, like, operating dollars, because most of this is considered capital. So I want to make sure that, yes, I understand. I want to make sure that that's taken care of. And so I'll look forward, I'll work with you on how we can make that, those answers coming to us, and I will personally check with the hubs partners, because I want to have those conversations prior to Thursday. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions on ARPA? Okay, we're now in recess. We'll get started with DGS in about two minutes.